Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Role.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoon.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Oram is present.
Who have all minutes?
Give the minutes from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and March first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, correspondence.
A report from Agriculture Markets on the municipal shelter report, inspection report from March tenth.
Received and filed.
And a standard notice of form providing a third day advance notice to a local municipality or community board for a liquor license.
Received and filed. For the good of the city, I would like to call the mayor up for a special presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We're honored this evening. We have a full house, and we have a full house for a very great reason for our community. First, I'd like to welcome our superintendent, Amy Creedon, and Bishop, Bishop Williams from the Middletown School Board, the president of the Middletown School Board, along with the other members, Mr. Perrino, Ms. Tobias, and I'm not sure if I missed anyone else who are members of the Middletown School Board here, along with the parents in a group from the Presidential Park School. If you're not familiar with it, and you should be, a short while ago, we welcomed back to Middletown a group of young ladies from a competition for the New York State Odyssey of the Mines. And not just that they participate in the competition, but they are the New York State champs. So we wanted to acknowledge. So we have a little recognition certificates and others gifts for them to be acknowledged tonight. But before we do that, I'd like to just have them all stand one by one at their seats as I call their name. Elena Newsom. Heather Checo. Zoe Lala. Juliana Galdemes. I apologize if I didn't say that right, but Camelia Chalito. The next one I better get right because her mother works for us. Alexa Ocasio. And last but not least, Julia Grogan. Now, I would like to invite up Julie Nolan, who is the head of this beautiful team. And she'll introduce her, her team of people that worked on it, and also explain to everyone and people watching on our access channel what Odyssey of the Mine is. So go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, I'm Julie Nolan. This is my partner, Mel Silva. We've been doing this together for a couple of years now, about six or seven years. I actually started with Mr. Witt's wife when the program just came back to Middletown. And I just want to explain what the program is. It's a creative problem solving. The girls get a problem that's five pages long, and they have to solve it in an eight-minute skit. And in that problem, there are lines and lines and lines of things they have to do. It took seven months, and you can't spend money. Just under, well, this year it went up, it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we recycle everything and build beautiful sets out of it. We're garbage pickers. Yes, we made our kids. I said recycle. It sounds a little nicer. This year was very special, first of all, because we won first place, which is huge. And we also won a Renata Fusco Award, which is the highest award you can win in Odyssey of the Mine for being creative, which was huge. And now we're on to Whirl's. And it's also very unique because this year they had to create a musical over, basically think of like Hamilton. Somebody who's famous but not really famous and should be remembered better. And they chose someone right here from Middletown. Lydia Sayar Hasbrook, I don't know if anybody knows, but after you see their performance, and if you want to talk to them, you're going to know all about her. And she was. Yes, that's how it all started. It started with the pick, the historical sign, and we made that as one of our props. Yeah, so you'll see that. You're going to play the.
Yes, we are.
So, yeah, if you want to, after you see it and talk to the girls and see how they found out about her, and, you know, she might need a bigger plaque here in City Hall now that she's better remembered. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you. And now we're going to have a little video. We were hoping that they would perform, but the props and transferring everything was just too much, so they are providing us with the video. Eileen, you want to start it up? It's about seven, eight minutes long, so enjoy the tape. We might have to put that on Broadway. That'd be a nice story to tell. There's a lot of talent there. I'd also like to bring up the school superintendent, our new superintendent, Amy Creedon, and I'm sure she has a few nice words to say about her proud moments.
Thank you, Common Council, President Rodriguez, and Mayor DiStefano. Really exciting night for our community and the district. This is certainly something that's shared by all of us. Not only did this all-female team win, but they won in Women's History Month. And so what we've been saying in school is that we don't want to talk necessarily just about women's history, but we want to talk about women right now and what they're doing. And so it's really exciting for them. And also just to note that each year that the Odyssey of the Mine has the competition, it is up to the judges to decide if a team receives the Fusco Award. And they don't give it out every year. And they only give it out to teams who demonstrate just overall incredible awesomeness, outstanding performance. And so that's something to note, that all of the judges, in addition to the team winning, have to then make a determination and come to a unanimous agreement about a team if they're going to acknowledge a team with this award. So truly something spectacular for this team. And when we had an opportunity to receive some feedback from some of the judges, they said that it wasn't even close. This team blew them away and is certainly a team to watch when they head to Iowa. So thank you very much for honoring them tonight.
And you've already accomplished something because we're going to fix that sign, that marker, too, because I think it's a little faded, so. So what we're going to do next is we're going to have you come up. We're going to present you with our certificates, and we have a little gift for you to take home with you. So we're going to call you up one by one, okay? Julia Grogan. Alexa Ocasio. Camelia Chalito. Juliana Goldemnez. Zoe Lala. Heather Checo. Alina Newsom. So you guys want to get behind us? Julie and Amy, want to come up for a picture? We'll all stand behind you. Amy coming up? Now, we know those boxes was the key to the city. It doesn't work really for the front door of City Hall, but it is the key to the city. So thank you all, and we'll take a couple-minute break, and then we can find out a little bit more about Lydia. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to like to address the council? Please step forward.
Good evening. Susan Depew from Middletown Pride Cleanup Committee. I'd just like to ask the aldermen to do a favor for the group that's trying to gather information. Would you please give us the streets and the community areas that need to be really cleaned up in your wards? So, so that it makes a difference. We have so many people who are interested in helping to make Middletown better. And that is a great example of Middletown being at the premium spot it can be. Seeing kids like that, it just brings, brings me to being a great grandpa. I just, anyway. So I'm asking you, please, to just go through the streets that are bothersome in your wards and let me know, and let Rich know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eileen, we have somebody on line?
Yes, we do. I have Juan. You're unused on our end. Feel free to go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Juan Ayala. And before I start, I want to quickly say that my congratulations to Alderman Sparrow and Alderman Jean Francois on their reelection. Anyway, I want to address the council on an issue concerning the heritage trail that's coming, cutting through the city of Middletown. Personally, I can't wait for it. I think this is the horse of my dear. And, but, as you know, I was a candidate for Alderman in the last election cycle, and then I went around knocking on doors of our wonderful neighbors. And several safety and privacy issues have been brought to my attention. One of the residents actually invited me over to her home to witness how close the trail is to her backyard. Now, she stated to me that she's reached out to the city of Middletown and the county. The county responded back to her. It's a little letter. She didn't take it really positively. But I did see with my own eyes how close this trail runs for her property. Now, for those to say, I'm aware because it's used to be a railroad trail that there's quite a bit of space. But where she is, she is literally two feet away from the trail. The trail also sits about three feet above her backyard, so she absolutely has no privacy. And she was sort of hoping that either the city or the county was sort of step up and provide like a privacy fence. And apparently, as I said before, the city of Middletown didn't respond back to her, but the county did. And I'm going to quickly pull up the letter here, but basically, one second. The county replied, suggested that they, that she plant either an evergreen trees along her property, which, and/or the city of Middletown might be able to do it for her or get a privacy fence on her property. But to be honest, she would need to get something like twelve feet to have any kind of privacy. So I will post these photos on my Facebook page, on oneforfreedom.com, but that's the number four. And so you can see for yourself, but that's one particular issue that was brought to my attention, and I totally agree with her. I mean, I can't wait for the trail to come through, but if I was living there, I would be very upset about what's going to happen. And I don't understand why the county can't put up a six-foot privacy fence on their, on the trail. It would probably be much cheaper than trying to plant several trees on her property. The other issue brought to my attention are those brought by two other residents. Also, they just want to know if the city of Middletown is going to buy any kind of patrol on the trail or any security cameras, because, you know, like, again, I didn't think about this, but I would be a little concerned if I had strangers, hungry strangers pass from my backyard. And, you know, and so those are those things I wanted to address to the council. I hope they do, they address it. I know the mayor's a big fan of quality of life issues, and that's all I have for today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Remarks of the mayor.
I'm glad the candidate for office this past November has decided to share with us recently this. This trail's been in the works for 21 years, and every person who was brought an issue to the city has been addressed, including some privacy issues. I don't know who the person is because he didn't identify them, but I believe that he probably should convey to them that the appropriate people to contact would be the city officials. I don't know if they contacted Sparrow or Jude. They're both shaking their head no. I know they didn't contact my office. I don't know why they would contact the losing candidate in a race rather than the winning candidates in a race. But we certainly will have a, entertain their phone call and meet with them and, and address it like we've addressed other issues along the trail. As for the security issue, it's kind of insulting for a candidate for office to raise a concern on a 30-mile trail that because it's coming into Middletown, all of a sudden we need security of some type along the trail. Security devices, but I'll just ignore that part for now. But we certainly would be willing to examine the options for privacy. Although I'm assuming it's along Sprague Avenue because that's where some of the other people have raised the issue. And we'll, we'll look at it when the homeowner calls us. But I'm not going to respond to, look on Mr. Ayala's Freedom website and probably see a picture of Donald Trump on there, and then I don't want to see that either, so. So I'll move on to the next issues, which was the event that we had tonight was fantastic. The kids are just so happy. I was fortunate to be there when the, I took my grandson, and my daughter was there for the bus trip back. And you can just see the pride, and Kevin, Kevin was there also, Andrew may have been there, I'm not sure. But, but the, this is what we're selling here in Middletown. It's, you know, the school district, the, the community, the community events, the trails, the recreation, the downtown. That's all what we're selling, quality of life. And we certainly want to address the quality of life for any person who has a concern, especially if it's a legitimate concern, so we'll, we'll do that. On, on the other side, we, you've seen a lot of activity downtown with construction. They're doing the saw cuts for the balance of the curbs and sidewalk program, but this is not just downtown. This will be almost every traffic, every singleized intersection in the city. We'll be getting the sidewalk work, new pedestrian crossings, ADA compliant crossings, at least 250 feet from each intersection of sidewalk, in some areas more, because we're connecting the gaps. You know, if we're doing a traffic light in their 500 feet or 1,000 feet apart, and we're doing 250 feet on each way, then we're filling in the other 500 feet between it. The total project is $26 million. The minimum funding will be 80%. The maximum funding will be 95%. We're very hopeful it's going to be the 95%. But in previous, we've, you know, you've appropriated the money, and we're hoping that we don't hit any, any problems. But this is going to be a massive project. It's going to be realigning some streets. The corner of Canal and James, where we tore down the building, is being realigned. The intersection at Wickham and Highland is going to be realigned with, I believe, a turning lane. The light at Lake, for example, will have a turning arrow, so you're not backed up to, down to Monhegan Avenue on certain times of the day when someone wants to make a left turn onto Lake. So all those things are being taken into consideration. Jacob is in charge of the project, and we're hoping, hoping for a successful project. The schedule is up on our website. It's been on Facebook. We've shared it with our business community. There will be some inconvenience in the areas that, when construction is underway, but the contractor will have to put, you know, steel plates over your driveway, or if it's a business, they'll have to do that. So if anyone's having any problems or complications with the contractor and with the work, you should call the Department of Public Works, and we will address it immediately. Don't call Mr. Ayala. Call the Department of Public Works. So the, the other issue that, well, I can wait for the next meeting. I know we've been here a while, and we have something to go, but I just wanted to address those points tonight and let people know that construction is happening. And there is a resolution tonight for a funding of using $50,000, the ARPA funding for planning for, that money will be applied to some infill planning and possibly psychiatric center planning. Dropkin Strategies is, John, we're all familiar with him from Pattern for Progress. He retired from that and has started his own consulting firm. And we met with him today, Maria and myself. We had a nice tour of what we're hoping that he will be able to work on for us. And I think it'll be very beneficial for the city as we move forward in the next year or two. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them either tonight or, you know, at a future date. So thank you so much.
Any question for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Remarks of the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just, just to update you that we're moving forward with our summer concert series events. And the Paramount has been hosting concerts. We have one this Saturday, April ninth, the Association. Hope to see folks come out for that. And as, as I'm speaking about events, the Run for Downtown also is coming back full force this year. And we're looking for your support tonight. As you know, the city hosts, along with the Business Improvement District, with the Run for Downtown Committee hosts the annual run. And they contributed $60,000 towards that pavilion, an areaway park. And overall, over 120, around 120,000 since the inception of the race, towards the downtown and downtown projects. So we are going to be doing a kickoff event, and we're looking for your support tonight on the resolution. And the kickoff event is to thank the contributors because there are also major sponsors that have been involved in this, in this run. And looking forward to that. And that's all I have for tonight, if anyone has any questions.
Question for Maria. Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I saw that the Paramount postponed or canceled the movies this past weekend. Has it said for technical difficulties? Has that been resolved?
It's being resolved. It's a projector issue that we have to send back the, there's a board in the projector, and we have to send it back, and it's got to get fixed. And hopefully, it'll be resolved this week or early next week, so.
Okay. I know, I know it's, you had a Thursday movie scheduled. Is that off the schedule now, too?
We're going to see if we can re-show, oh, for this Thursday?
Yeah.
I believe, yeah, we won't be able to pull it off for this Thursday. But if, by any chance, we'll be posting and updating if we do. But it is, you know, we have one, one projector. We're not six screens, so these things happen. And like I said, we're, the board is getting mailed to the company. They're going to fix it, send it back, and then we'll be, we'll be back to the movies soon.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I had a special request to move fast, so I'll move fast tonight because, from Alderwoman Ram Cassoon. Because she's tired. She's been watching the games and so on. Reservoirs, Alderman Massey, full 100%. We're happy about that. The flushing for our water distribution system, we have completed the second and third ward. And now we're going to be starting on Monday, the first and fourth ward. So please be on the lookout for discolored water. Second and third ward, they can start using the water comfortably because any discolored water would have passed by now. It will take us three weeks, hopefully less, to finish the first and fourth ward for water system flushing. Tomorrow will be, again, we're meeting with DOT and the contractor for the water line on Monhegan Avenue, Route 211, in there to scope out the extent of paving and milling on 211. So, and hopefully getting the contractor back to work to finish the project because we do have some issues there. So hopefully, we can resolve some of them at least tomorrow. Traffic operation, the mayor, he spoke about it in great details. Please be careful when you walk by the workers. They're working for us, so, you know, we want them to go home safely. Be patient. Find alternate routes if you have to, if you're not comfortable with the one-lane traffic. But we, we expect to keep the traffic moving. Just be patient, please, and look out for the safety of the workers, that they are doing this work for us, and they want to go home safely to their families, that they're doing the work for, to support them. The Wall Slayer Field, Parks and Recs and Water Department, they've been doing the excavation for the electrician to do all the electric work in there and the lighting, and that is almost completed. We also installed today the water line to supply the future concession stand and the irrigation system. There's going to be some portable irrigation system that will be used. After that, the contractor will come back and finish the final coat on top of the track, and that will be the end of the project. So I think it's a, it's a nice, successful project. We've been talking for a couple of years about the zombie poles and the double poles and all that stuff. We have 60 of them that they have to be removed totally because of the traffic operation studies and, or, traffic operation project. And, and really, it's, they're an eyesore, and some of them, I don't know how safe they are. But making a long story short, Brian Smith, our deputy commissioner, he's really been working hard on this, coordinating this effort with Frontier and with Spectrum and all the internet providers, the fiber optic providers, there are three of them in the city. And Orange and Rockland really is out of it because they moved right away. What remains is Spectrum and Frontier. And now they have two teams in there working, they're going to be working nonstop to try to eliminate all the double poles in the city, starting with the 60 poles that are required for the traffic operations and the signalized intersection. So I just want to call out Brian because he did, he really took special interest in this and kept pursuing it. And I want to thank Frontier, Spectrum, and all the other companies for cooperating with us and really making this eyesore disappear hopefully very soon. Yard waste officially started yesterday. Remember, please go to our website. No leaves to be pushed on the street or in the gutter. Everything has to be canned in a container so we can come and pick it up. No loose branches. It's got to be cut certain length. It's going to be bound with the string. So look at our website, DPW, at the city of Middletown website, and you'll find the exact specifications for it. Reminder, also, the spring cleanup is going to be starting on April 25th. It's going to be the second ward. May 2nd will be the first ward, May 9th, fourth ward, and May 16th is the third ward. That starts on Monday. Make sure everything is out, please, by Sunday. Do not put it out too early. Our code enforcement has been going around the city and they're sending people friendly reminders, if possible. Otherwise, issuing a violation for people to take their junk back in until the time for their ward to be put out. Otherwise, the city will look like a landfill, so please help us out, keep our city clean. And hopefully, we'll have no names to be submitted for Ms. Sue Depew for cleanup. If everybody cleans up after themselves in their front yard and the streets, leave them to us. We will clean them. We have the sweepers going on nonstop, basically. Also be on the lookout, please, for illegal dumping, meaning people coming from the outside to dump their junk and whatever they have into our streets in front of your house at night. Please call the police department immediately at night. Please call the police department immediately at night. You can take a picture. We will not share your information. It will be confidential. We just want to catch these people and discourage them from coming because it costs us a lot of money to get rid of all this junk and picking it up and trucking it all the way to Pennsylvania and landfill in Pennsylvania. So please be vigilant and take pictures, report it during the day to DPW and the police department. After hours to the police department. Let's keep our city clean and let's do this operation economically. And with that, I will conclude for now. If you have any questions for me?
Alden Green.
Hey, real quick, and the mayor may have covered this, so I apologize if I'm doubling up, but I did have someone ask me with the traffic operations, I know originally there was a plan across from the Armory to cut out that little pass-through section where you have Liberty Street and Wickham.
Yes.
Is that still something that's going to happen?
Yes. That shortcut in there, the dangerous shortcut, the extension of Liberty Street is going to be eliminated. It's going to be parked, it's going to be park area in there, just an extension of it. And from Highland, you'll be able to turn left on Wickham Avenue with the traffic lights and everything. And WSP, they had, they were flying a drone today. WSP is the engineering firm that designed the project so that they can show pictures before and after with the drone. So we're all very excited. It's going to be state-of-the-art technology for all this signalized intersections. They're going to be synchronized. They're going to be coordinated. It's going to take some, you know, we're going to have to work at it at the beginning, but eventually it will work.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Alden Tobin.
Commissioner, could you just share what you shared with us about Amshire and the draining of the, or what you guys did cutting down the vegetation, the plan to go back?
Yes. So basically, some people were complaining about Amshires, and the fourth ward is not, well, not some people, one person, is not, is not being paid attention to by the City of Middletown and so on, which is far, far, far from the truth. Most of Amshire Village has just been recently milled and repaved, as an example. I'll get to the drainage. We have put sidewalks that they never had sidewalks in certain locations, such as on Dulson Avenue in there, to encourage walkers, business, encourage to promoting life, really, for walkers and then, and getting life into that section of the city. So we've been paying more than, more attention than anything. The roundabout in there, you know, $2 million investment in the roundabout and paving and James Peak Kelly Way and all these stuff. So we've been paying as much attention as we pay to the rest of the city. They have not been ignored. They've been, some would argue that they have been favored somewhat, but they needed that. So regarding the drainage, we have already went there and we cut out all the growth as much as we can reach right now because it's a wet season. We've done like that like a month ago. I know you got the complaint after we already cut it out. There are still some sections remaining in there, but it's too wet. We have to drive over the railroad track to get to it. That railroad track is not dead. It can, it is used. It's owned by a company. We can't get on it without permission from them. City took ownership, not ownership, city started maintaining those ditches along the railroad tracks. Those ditches, they drained the entire Amshire Village right into them. That's where all the drainage, all the runoff, it ends up on those ditches along the railroad track. So we have been maintaining it. Now, once it dries up in the summer, we will go in there with our big machines and we will literally dredge those ditches around the railroad tracks as much as possible and remove the vegetation entirely. Alderman Spiro and I, Alderman Jude and I, we went there, we checked all the culverts after you got that complaint because we usually drive around because he's the DPW chairman for the council. So we drive around different projects, him and I. So we stopped in there, said, well, let's go see it. And all the culverts, none of them were plugged. Water was running, you know, and there is standing water, it's always been standing water, except if there's a drought condition. Water, I mean, standing but still moving, it's not just sitting there. But that's, that's how it is. We have not ignored it. We took it over. It should be the responsibility of the railroad. We tried that for years. They would not maintain it, so we took it over. We're maintaining it by directions from the mayor, and that's where we are. We're not ignoring it.
Anyone else? Thank you for being quick. Fire chief.
Good evening. First, I want to congratulate the kids for the Odyssey of the Mine. That was, that's very great that they did that. But for the month of March, we did 84 calls. Right now, we're on, scheduled to run about 1,000 calls for the year if it keeps up. We did participate in the Little League Parade, and we also participated, we sent fire trucks up for Odyssey of the Mine when they came back. So that was nice. Maria brought up Run for Downtown. This year, Run for Downtown and the fire department are teaming up. We're teaming up to save Fireman Joe Downtown, which is leaning, getting ready to fall over. And I'm working with Jacob to get the bids out in the paper so people can bid it and hopefully get it done this year. But like Maria said, August 20th, Run for Downtown. The fire department, we are having, putting together a first responder challenge for this Run for Downtown. If you didn't know, Middletown, Middletown were the champions last year because we competed against ourselves. So we won. But this year, we're offering it up to 52 other departments in Orange County. And hopefully, once the word gets out, all the flyers get out, we get 52 responses back from other departments to take us on. We do hold the trophy.
How many on the team?
As many as you want to bring. So I figure you, the mayor, and Miguel.
That's, that's what we were thinking.
Yes. But other than that, that's all I have for tonight. Anything else?
Any question for the fire chief? Thanks, chief. City treasurer. He was quick.
Good evening, everybody. There is a resolution tonight requesting authorization for the refunding of some bonds, and Alderman Witt wanted me to speak a little bit about it. Basically, the city contracts with a company called Capital Market Advisors, and they actually look out for savings for the city. They look at the interest rates. Basically, it's like refinancing your mortgage. So it was a 30-year bond issuance, and at this point in time, you know, with the cost of the, their fees and the legal fees, they felt it was worth it for us to refinance the bonds. In cash value, it's going to save us $325,000 over the next couple of years. They do a whole net present value thing, and they're saying it's about 256. But, you know, they tell us this is a really good thing to do right now. No problem. Any other questions?
Any question for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly. Police chief.
Good evening. Just a couple of things this evening. First, this past Wednesday, one of my staff, a longtime member of the police department's, Detective Sergeant Jason Jennings, retired. I just want to wish him well and acknowledge his achievements with the department. He will definitely be missed, and I wish him well as he enters into the next chapter of his life's journey. Additionally, last week, we had the first graduation of our youth leadership academy. We had 18 participants, very successful program, and like to thank Sergeant Welch, who ran it, did an amazing job, and all the support from our, you know, elected officials in our community, members that made that all happen. So thank you for that. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for the police chief? Alden Kleiner.
Hi, chief. One quick question. We have a resolution, I see a lot of material supporting it, for the buying the simulator?
Yes.
My question is, what is a simulator?
Okay. So the simulator, it's a driving simulator that will be housed at the police academy, which is on the Parks and Rec property of County Route 78. And it is an electronic driving instrument that we could put police officers into a controlled environment where they will drive through EVAC courses, emergency vehicle operation courses, in that controlled environment. It's computer animated, automated, and it's really state-of-the-art. It's a lot safer, and we could put them through a lot more challenges and tests.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Recreation. I know you're here. Trying to hide in the bed.
Trying. Good evening, everyone. Spring is upon us, trying to be here. Our maintenance department is very busy right now. Little League fields, getting our reservoir trails back in shape and working on the Wall Slayer field project as well. Once in a while, we always hear, there's nothing for the youth to do in Middletown, and there's only, we only offer free, paid programming. But just want to make it known that we do offer a lot of free programming for the kids. And this Sunday, April 10th, at 1:00 PM, we're even starting to bring, go into neighborhoods. So we're offering this Sunday in Summit Field Housing Authority, we're doing a free Zumba class for all families, all levels, all ages. And we're going to be rotating once a month, trying to hit different neighborhoods, doing family Zumba classes. We also have our Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 16th, at our facility. We have Storytime Come Alive for toddlers. We also have youth fitness and basketball open gym, and we have teen boxing on Friday nights and teen basketball open gym. And again, those are all free programming for our community. Paid programs for the spring, we have our spring break program coming up April 11th through the 15th. We have the Let's Play Gym Time for toddlers, lacrosse clinics, martial arts, breakdancing, adult youth and teen art classes, soccer clinics, foundations of dance, cheerleading clinic, cooking classes, kitchen for kids, and a crocheting clinic for all ages. So we're always busy, and I'm sure, like a lot of you, you hate when someone says there's nothing to do in Middletown. There is. You just have to look. Transportation, I mentioned it last meeting. We did start it the first two weeks. Unfortunately, we didn't have anyone take it, but numbers are starting to pick up now. So it is successful for Wednesday nights. We had about 10 kids use the transportation, and even more kids, when they got their ride to the facility, they got on the bus to get home. So it is working. Summer sports camp, we have the permits into Manhattan. We're just waiting for final approval from the school district. They have a lot of programming going on this summer, so they're trying to get themselves situated. And then hopefully, very soon, we'll hear back and get final confirmation to be in one of the schools to have our summer sports camp. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Great job. Corporation council.
Evening. I don't have anything unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any question for the corporation council? Thank you. City clerk.
Just a reminder, we have our citywide pride cleanup taking place on April 23rd. You can sign up online through the city's website, www.middletown-ny.com. We're using SignUp Genius. There's a whole list of streets and areas that need to have some attention paid to them, and if there's anything missing, feel free to email me or get ahold of us at the city clerk's office, and we'll add them to the list as well.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Public hearings and grievances.
Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible in the common council chamber, second floor, 16 James Street at 7:30, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the recently passed local law number three of 2022, a local law updating the notice provisions in the enforcement of delinquent property taxes. Full text of the law, local law number three of 2022 is available in the office of the common council clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, room number 12, and on the city website.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any council member? Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Alden Massey, second by Alden Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Marks of Alderman, Alden Massey. Do you have another one?
First thing I'd like to do is-
Wait, wait, wait. I got to go back to the public hearing. I have a second one. I'm sorry.
Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible in the common council chambers, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed change to the definition of retail business in the DMU Downtown mixed-use district to exclude onsite consumables. Any person or persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed change in the definition of retail business. Complete proposed change is available in the office of the common council clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, room 12, and on the city website.
All right. This time, the public hearing is now open. Again, anyone from the public? And any council member? Alden Tobin?
Well, the issue is, is that we've gotten word that some retail stores are, in effect, morphing into eating and drinking places, where people are hanging out, eating or drinking what they, what they buy at retail. And we could bring violations against the owner because the owner got permission or was in a zoning district where he could operate a retail store, he or she, and they're, in effect, violating their permit or violating the zoning district by becoming an eating and drinking establishment. Instead of doing that, I think we felt that the smarter thing to do would be to make it clear upfront that if you apply to become a retail store, or you have permission from the zoning district to be a retail store, that you're going to sell at retail. You're not going to be selling to people who are then going to be eating and drinking at your place. If you want that, you have to apply the planning board for permission to do that so the planning board can examine your premises and see that everything fits into, you know, running an eating and drinking establishment and set rules.
Anyone else? Do I got a motion to close?
So moved.
Massey, second by Alden Witt. Roll. I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're Marks of Alderman. Alden Massey.
All right. I'd like to open up with, once again, congratulating the young ladies from Presidential Park Odyssey of the Mine team. You watch the news enough and you see so many negative things about the youth, and then unfortunately, you don't see more of this. And it's a wonderful thing, and I'm very proud of them, very proud of the school system, and this was very nice. Two, Sue, thank you very much for the cleanup. I do have some streets in the first ward. I'm sure Kevin will have some other streets. I'll, I'll give them the rick. And then my last thing quickly, just an advertisement. Unfortunately, the, because of the weather, the first of this year Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast was canceled. It's rescheduled for this Saturday. This Saturday at the high school, excuse me, April 9th. If you need tickets, I happen to have them. If not, tickets are available at the, at the door. If you've already got them, obviously, they're good for the 9th. Thank you very much.
Okay. Alden Witt?
Thank you very much. Quickly, we have, we're going to have our first first ward meeting on April 13th from 6:00 to 7:00 here. We hope you can make it. And the second part is just to sort of expand on the greatness of tonight with these girls and this performance. What we saw tonight was actually taped before they did their regional competition and because they did not allow spectators at that time. And so they went out and did that performance at Goshen and won the regional competition to qualify for states. I happened to speak with the director of that for something else, and the way that works is they have an elementary level, a middle school level, and a high school level. And she told me that that performance that those girls put on was the best that they had seen at any level in years. So it was amazing how, and they wrote all of that. They built the sets, they did the music. I mean, obviously, they borrowed some stuff, but it was, they, they did all of that. So then they take it on the road up to Albany, and they went up against 15 teams. And the way this works is, this is a two-part deal, actually. The first is that performance, which they did very well and won that performance, with that performance. But there's also a part of this called spontaneous, where they have, five of the seven are taken into a room and given an open-ended question where they have to, within a certain timeframe, give answers that would be logically, that could fill into these, the fill-in-the-blank for what it's worth. And they also, you have like about two or three minutes to do this, and they're judged by how many make sense and how many don't, and on their creativity. They also won that, two out of 15 teams. So it's unheard of how, for this competition, like how much this team dominated. And it was great to see probably 200 people, including the mayor, who were there for the welcome home. And as Chief Barber said, it was nice to have the police there and the- And as Chief Barber said, it was nice to have the police there and the fire trucks. So thank you for listening to that story.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was a fantastic couple of weeks, I guess, for the youth in the city. Always proud of them. You know, of course, the Odyssey of the Mine Team, the Police Youth Leadership Academy. It was phenomenal to really see those eighteen, I believe it was eighteen, yeah, young adults all come together, all different walks of life, it seemed, all different backgrounds, and just the transformation and the learning back and forth between the police department and the youth. That was amazing. Little League Parade was wonderful, little bit chilly. Mayor and I, we're up there walking. I know Coach Kate was out with her team, and then, you know, we all joined together on the stage where it was like a wind tunnel, but it was amazing to see, you know, all of the teams out there. They put a lot of heart and work and soul into their banners, and to get out there and really show, you know, how proud they were to be playing their different levels, and what a fantastic job. So thank you to everyone who put that together. We will be having our constituents' meeting in this room on Monday, the eleventh, at seven p.m. The mayor will be joining us, and I did find out, thanks to Alderman Kleiner, we will have COVID testing kits available in case anyone does need them. So again, that'll be here Monday, the eleventh, at seven p.m. And just to follow up, I am excited to hear that there will be an arrow at that left on the Lake Avenue, because sometimes people get a little impatient, and I get honked at a lot, because I do take that left. So thank you very much.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I'm going to speak first as president of the Middletown Historical Society. I want to thank the Odyssey kids. What a great job on Lydia Sayre Hasbrook. Of course, her husband, John Hasbrook, did the first Middletown City Directory, and was editor and publisher of the Whig Press throughout the Civil War. And then what a great team they were, and she would write letters surreptitiously to the paper. She's, we will hopefully get the historic marker restored, so it's a little easier to read, but she's somebody you should know about, and I congratulate the kids for taking her story and really running with it. The Little League Parade, I want to, I made a little shout-out for the Asylum Nine, which was Middletown's first baseball team, the Sepulte State Hospital, and baseball's been a big deal in Middletown ever since. And remembering Thomas Watts, who donated the land for Watts Park. I mean, people in Middletown have always stepped up. The parade was terrific this year. The kids, the banners were great. Everyone was so enthusiastic. So I thank the coaches and the sponsors, but I also want to recognize Darren and Rosanna because, as they mentioned, they didn't miss the Little League season, even through the pandemic. They managed, by hook or by crook, to make it work. And I remind people that in nineteen fifty-two, half the season was canceled, including the playoffs because of the polio pandemic. So it's quite an accomplishment, and I give them credit for. Next, before we meet again, we will have Easter Sunday. I wish everyone a happy Easter. We will have Passover. Wish everyone a happy Passover. I just want to mention that we are up to nine hundred and eighty-two thousand deaths in this country. At the last meeting, we were nine hundred and, I believe, nine hundred and sixty-five. So we're, you know, seventeen, eighteen thousand more people since then. So it's still a real issue, and we do take it seriously. I want to thank Rick for his support of our, this will be his first one, but our Pride Cleanup Day. He has taken it and run with it, and the Sign Up Genius on the website, and I encourage any of the teams or any of the groups of kids to do that and sign up that way. It's a great program. It's easy to sign up. You pick your area, you pick your streets, and the more we do that ahead of time, the more time we'll have to be out there actually cleaning up. So thank you, Rick, for that. And I think, basically, oh, and congratulations, thank you to Sergeant Welch and the Police Leadership Academy. Those kids were also great. That was a wonderful ceremony. And as I said at that meeting, it's all about community. It's a word we've heard a lot tonight. It's the Middletown community, and it's leaders and sponsors, and people who, all the sponsors for the run for downtown and for all the community events we do, they don't get enough credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cassoon?
At the risk of repeating anything, I will try not to. Just, the Odyssey of the Mine Team, those are my kids. They're all at Presidential Park. I see them every day. I'm their Miss Katie. They put in a lot of time in this, lunches, recesses after school, and obviously, it paid off. They're amazing, brilliant little kids. We've got a whole school of them over there, and I'm just really proud of them. So that was cool. Little League opening day was a beautiful day. We had sunshine and a bunch of raised days of rain, and I love being Coach Katie and being around the kids, and it's a good time. I don't think we speak enough about the amount of volunteerism in this community, the members of the Little League Board, the members of all of our sports that we run in town. They're all volunteers. No one's paid for this. These are parents taking their time out to have these opportunities for our kids, and it's amazing. Our parents are coaches, our umpires are our kids, and it's a really cool thing that we do here. And I just, I was at that park till five o'clock at night on Saturday, and it all was amazing. And I just, it's just another one of examples, when we go out together as Middletown, we're from every walk of life and everywhere you can imagine, and we all have a really great time together, and it was a great day. That's it.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Congrats to Odyssey of the Mine. Back in the day, when my kids were of that age bracket, I briefly looked at the qualifications and the expectations for the coach, and I saw that was way more than I could possibly do. So yes, it is about the kids, but I think we also need to remember the coaches put in a tremendous amount of time as well to make it all happen, so I thank them as well. I try to stick mostly to local when I have this opportunity, but I find it difficult tonight. I think in the last few days, looking at the news, there's a saying, "The history repeats itself." And as we read about mass executions and filtration camps, I think the parallels to Nazi Germany are becoming increasingly difficult to ignore. So where's it going to end? It's not clear. And I know there's a long, respected concept of separation of church and state, but I would offer tonight, we should pray for Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson?
Yes, good evening. First, I would like to thank Alderman Massey for conducting our fourth ward meeting this Friday. Sprow and I had other attention. We had other things to do, so we couldn't attend the meeting, so he stepped right in and took it in business for us. And he was pretty proud, you know, to step in and get involved, even if it was only an hour, but he did the right thing. I appreciate that a lot, because we definitely couldn't make it that day. And also, Commissioner, I got to say, that one negative feedback that we see from Hampshire, thank you for clearing that up, because the week prior, Sprow and I was in that area. We collected signatures. We must have at least knocked on twenty doors, and all positive feedback. And I was shocked to hear that one person had an issue, and you and I canvassed that area. And that particular day, it was raining pretty hard, and the water was flowing with no issues. So like I say, it can make everyone happy. Thank you. Also, kudos to the Odyssey of Mine young ladies. They were great. Great job. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Alderman Massey for pitching in for us when we couldn't make it. I was up in Albany for the weekend. I'd like to also reach, offer my congratulations to Coach Nolan and Silva and the Odyssey of the Mine state championship team, and I wish them good luck in Worlds. It was such, watching the video, such a great blend of talents. You could see some were dancing, some were singing, some were playing the orchestra. And I agree with the superintendent, there was an overall awesomeness of the group, and it was really nice to see, especially as a history teacher, and the difference that people can make, like individuals in the suffrage movement, and the pride that they had for Orange County and Middletown really put us on the map there. So, and all these events I've been seeing recently, whether it's the police program, the Leadership Academy, I couldn't make the Little League thing, but the parade, I wish I could. And the Odyssey of Mine, there's so many talented students and children in our city, and it's great to see them shine, especially an all-female team. Also, the person that spoke before that called in, you know, Jude and I handle probably over a hundred constituent concerns a year. Each week, we're probably handling one or two. We work with a team with the mayor, the council president, the department heads, to try to solve as many problems as we can, get questions answered. We might not always have the answer that you want, but we do work our hardest to get you, to try to solve the problems that you bring to us. Where you're available, you can reach out to us on the website. We do have a constituents' meeting on Saturday mornings, the first Saturday of each month, at ten a.m. You just got to make sure you're here by ten, because when we come upstairs, the door locks behind us. And so, and it doesn't matter whether you're Republican, Democrat, we help everybody, and you're here to serve, you guys, and so, and we try to do our best with the city. So please, if you have an issue or concern, please reach out to us. Our phone numbers and emails are on the website, and we handle everything from up near High Barney Road all the way down to East Main Street. So thank you.
Thank you. New business?
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a DASHNIE grant application to purchase a simulator for the Middletown Police Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a retirement of the K-9 eras from the Middletown Police Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing the refunding of two thousand and fourteen bonds.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon approving the revised two thousand and twenty-two salary schedule for part-time employees.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Redcoon, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing three agreements with Troy and Banks for audits.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.